Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Cedar Falls Board of Education with a reminder that the actions taken at this table will focus on our students and their achievement. With that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with one correction to the October 8th minutes? We want to make sure that Jeff Orvis's name is on there as our delegate representative. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
It's been moved by Susie Hines. Do I have a second?
Second.
Then seconded by Eric Giddens. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to item C on the agenda, public comment. Have not received any?
Nope.
Okay, good. Now to communications. Marika Yang will be up representing the Cedar Falls High School Student Body.
So, in the past couple of weeks at the high school, the food drive pickups have been happening at the elementary schools through different sport teams and senior leadership. So, we've gone to schools in groups during power hour and after school to pick up the donated food. Student Senate has been working on sorting this food and boxing it up so it's ready to go. And the Powder Puff volleyball game is also tonight at 7:00 PM at the high school, which the cost to enter is either $5 or two jars of peanut butter, which also benefits the food drive. Trunk or treat is this Sunday from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, so be sure to bring your kids for some fun trunk or treating at the high school.
Thank you, Marika. Any questions or comments?
That's in the south lot, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Really always a fun event and certainly we encourage everybody to come out. Is the food drive coming along pretty well with the pickups?
Yeah, we've got tons of canned food that we've been sorting at our morning meetings for Student Senate, which has been great.
Outstanding.
Right. And do we have a link yet for monetary donations? You know, when I looked the last time, I didn't see one.
I'm pretty sure I can get that. I will check into that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marika.
Okay, moving on to Janelle Darst to give us an update on the newsletter.
Hello, we have lots to cover tonight when the communications update, so we'll get right to it. First off, this past Saturday was the Iowa All-State Music Festival auditions, and we had 43 Cedar Falls student musicians that were accepted into the 2018 Music Festival, which is a huge number. They will be performing at the concerts in November, on November 17th, at Hilton Coliseum and Iowa State. And you can get tickets through Ticketmaster, and then Iowa Public Television also broadcasts the concert. And I would love to say that I will read all of the names, but that is 43 names right there. So, we had students from band, choir, and orchestra. And it was really great because the choir and band Twitter accounts actually posted some photos of the students. So, there's a few of the pictures from this past Saturday, so congratulations to all of them. And then also their teachers and a lot of hard work they put into this, so congratulations to them. Also, congratulations to the Rocket Club. This is the second year that they were chosen by NASA as a student launch team, and Marika is one of the Rocket Club members, so congratulations to them. And I'm sure they'll be hearing much more of that. I believe the launch is in April. Launch is in April.
You said one of seven high school teams across the nation?
Yes.
Really impressive.
One of seven high school teams, so congratulations to them. And then Andy, a student at the high school, was actually represented us at the World Food Prize Global Youth Institute in Des Moines. He was a group of 200 students from 27 states and 10 countries, talking about solutions to address food insecurity around the world. And this was really exciting last week. Orchard Hill actually held a contest for the Read-a-thon. The students that raised either the most money or read the most minutes were given a sneak peek tour of their new edition last week. So, these are all of the students. They were able to be part of that tour. So, big thanks to Peters Construction that was part of that tour and coordinating it. This is their gym space, which I think for a lot of them was pretty hard to understand for what they are going to have now, from what they have now to what they will have for their gym space. So, it was pretty awe-inspiring for them. This, I believe, is their walking down to the 5th and 6th grade classroom space. And they, of course, had their hard hats and their vests on. And this is looking out to the north side of the building, and this is actually, I believe, in a 5th grade classroom that they're standing in. And then the playground is to the left. Thanks to Dan Chandler with Structure Architects as well for doing the tour and then taking lots of questions from the students. And then this is actually the front of the building that faces Round Street. And I'll actually be emailing all the board members so we can designate a time soon to go in for all of you to get a tour. But I believe they're still scheduled to be in the building hopefully soon after the first of the year for that new space.
How many pages do we need to read?
How many pages do you?
That's right.
Oh, Jeff, that is an excellent question. That is an excellent question. I should have led with that. Bring some money to donate to the Read-a-thon, or make sure you've read your 500 minutes. This right here is actually a quick post that was on the Holmes Twitter account. This is students in 7th grade that are doing secrets and safes projects in their exploratory computer science class. And they're using a microbit to create a safe or security system. It's part of the project Lead the Way curriculum that the junior highs are using. I thought this was fun to share, but the Google expeditions that our coaches put together is now being utilized in the classrooms. So, this was classroom from Cedar Heights, and they're utilizing the Culture in the Cedar Valley Google expedition that was created. So, it's pretty neat to be able to see that actually in action now in the classrooms. This is a really great program that just launched last week. Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Northeast Iowa just started the second location for the Workplace Mentoring Program. Their first location was at Kuna and Waverly, and this is their first one here in Black Hawk County. And it's with North Cedar Elementary students and Viking Pump employees. And the students are actually bussed from North Cedar to Viking Pump on the early-out Wednesdays. And then they spend an hour with their mentor at the Viking Pump site, and then they're bussed back to North Cedar. So, it's 15 matches that were able to be made through this program. We really want to thank Big Brothers, Big Sisters for being willing to kind of go on this endeavor with us. And then especially to Viking Pump. They are a great support of Cedar Falls schools, and even more so with their allowing their employees at times to be mentors. So, they've actually created a space where they'll be able to spend time together, the bigs and the littles. So, twice a month, they'll be going to Viking Pump throughout the school year. And then we have lots of really congratulations across the board for our athletics. First of all, to our men's cross-country team. They qualified for state on their second-place finish at districts. And then we had two women's cross-country, McKenzie and Page, that qualified for the state cross-country meet. And then we had three cheerleaders that also made the Iowa All-State Cheer Team, Sabrina Brook and Noa Lani. And then this just kind of is a great laundry list, so to speak. This came from Athletic Director Troy Becker. Our men's golf actually finished fourth at state earlier in October. They were our super meet champions, conference and district champions. Trevor Heinan and Ben Burma were first-team All-State athletes. Our football team is still undefeated, district champions as officially of last Friday. Volleyball's undefeated as well, super meet champions, divisional conference champions. And then women's swimming, we're divisional conference champions this fall as well. And it is a great week to be a hashtag Tiger Pride fan. Tomorrow night, our volleyball starts off with the Regionals versus Fort Dodge up at the high school at 7:00. Friday, we have our first football playoff game versus Indiana at the Dome at 7:00. And then Saturday is a cross-country state meet and the girls' varsity regional swimming and diving competition. So, we would really encourage anyone that's able to come out to come out and support our student athletes. And there's where it's all posted all the time for anybody that wants to go take a look. And then also all of our building-level social media. Any questions?
Any questions for Jill? Thank you. Great report.
Yeah, thank you for sharing.
Yes, and I just have another communication update. And this one is not as maybe happy and upbeat as Janelle's always is, highlighting the great things that are going on. But just as the board knows, we had an incident last week at the high school, and there was a pellet gun. And I think it's just important for people to understand just the process and really the focus with the district on student safety, utmost concern for everybody within the school system. And as people know, in this day and age of instantaneous information, sometimes we're not always the first to know some of the things that are going as administrators, teachers, sometimes even other students. And, you know, one of the mantras that we really try to live by is if you see something, say something. That is so important for everybody to understand and to make sure that students feel comfortable coming forward. Just so everybody on the board table is aware, when we found out about a rumor that somebody might have something in a bookbag of concern, we reviewed that, we had our police involved instantaneously. We went through the search process and the safe and secure process that we have in our buildings to make sure that things were taken care of well. We communicated out quickly to parents about roughly an hour later. And this is the challenge that I think everybody faces. In this day and age of social media, we try to balance that need for immediacy with communication, but also balancing the need for accuracy with communication. Because some people want information now, some people say, "I don't want the information till it's 100% accurate." And both of those don't really necessitate equality. So, we sent information out about an hour after we found out about it, and certainly we're secure. And as we sent that out, which typically happens, we found out more information, which was really good. Students, parents, community members started to say, "Well, there could be some other components to this side." We dug in deeper and certainly had more police involvement and more investigation occur. But again, we just want to make sure if people see something, they say something. It's important to make sure that everybody understands. Safety and security is so, so important for us as a district, and certainly important for all of our staff and our students. But certainly something that I want to make sure is stated publicly, and our board is well aware of that.
Andy, when something like this happens, no matter what, I know you always go back and continue to review the process and see what you can do better, what things can be put into place or changed or tweaked. So, I know that's something you are always looking at.
Very much so. And it's always good to go back and debrief. We typically debrief with the police. We debrief with multiple different levels of our staff and our administrative teams. And there's some things, as you look back, that you always wish that you could maybe tweak or have changed throughout the process. And we get good feedback from, I know, some board members as well as parents that talk about, "Here are some things that might be good to think about, or the way that I feel best with the communication coming out." And we greatly appreciate that, because we want our parents to be able to talk to us and make sure that they share with us some of those components.
I was gonna say, I think that one of the important things too is, parents that are watching, high school parents, if they did not receive the call or the email, they really need to contact their building secretary to make sure we have that correct information in the Power School accounts, because that's where we pull the information from to send those notifications. So, that's really important for them to let us know if they didn't receive those.
Good question. Good.
And Janelle, was that all secondary that were supposed to have gotten it, or just high school?
Just high school. Just high school would have gotten two notifications. And then, if I recall correctly, all parents did receive the first notification as well, but that was just by email. High school would have received a phone call and an email. So, we have various ways. We can communicate it, but we kind of choose different things depending on the situation.
Thank you, Janelle.
Yep, thank you. So again, wanted to make sure that the board understood that, and certainly as we go through those processes, you peel back those onions, the layers of the onion, as you go through those investigations. And certainly important that as we wound up in the morning, we knew that everything was safe and secure. Then as you continue to investigate, you find out additional details from the day before to uncover some of those different layers. And again, we really greatly appreciate the Cedar Falls Police, our student body, our staff at the high school, and the work that they did, and certainly our parents as well. Because these are always challenging circumstances to go through to make sure that we are doing the right things for the right reasons, which is safety for our students.
Thank you. Okay, moving on now to the Secretary's financial report. Doug?
Thank you. If we could call up the report for the month of September, thank you. And we'll kind of buzz through this here pretty quick. In the general fund, you can see that we had a total revenue of about 4.24 million with expenses of about 4.8. And so, we ended up with a fund balance of 3,392,000 and change. And you can see that that's up about a half a million dollars from this time a year ago. In the management fund, 37,600 in revenue with just over 9,000 in expenses. So, we're sitting at 513,575 in the management fund. Capital Projects Fund, of course, that's a reminder, this is the fund that we're using for Aldrich, North Cedar, and Orchard Hill. Revenue that you see, 6,600 is all interest, expenses 941,000, so we've got 3.75 million left. We're still on track to expend all those dollars by the end of December. And once those dollars are expended, then the remainder of the North Cedar and Orchard Hill projects will be paid for using statewide one-cent sales tax funds. In the statewide one-cent sales tax fund, you can see revenue of 822,000. We did receive two payments in the month of September from the state. They've been kind of oscillating back and forth. Sometimes we get two payments in one month, then the next month we won't get anything, and the next month we might get one. It's sort of a timing thing more than anything else. Expenditure is just a small amount, 11,980, you can see, and then the transfer to Fund 40 for the debt obligation we have in Fund 33, within any balance of 9.3 million. And I would remind the board that 8.3 of that is actually what's available for use. In the physical plant and equipment levy, revenue of 187,000, expenditures of 668,000 approximately, as we're sort of finishing up some summer work with some projects and getting those folks paid off for that sort of work, within any balance of 2.629 million. Debt service fund, there you can see a revenue for the month. It's a combination of some property tax and interest, a small amount of property tax and interest. And then there's the transfer from Fund 33 of the 218,000. No expenditures, we will not have any expenditures until December, so we have an ending balance of 1,105,000. Student activity, 127,600 in, 63,400 out, 614,000 for a fund balance. Our agency accounts, as you can see, 16,6 in, 26,1 out, for an ending balance of 236,575 in the one-cent local option, excuse me, food service account, I'm sorry. First real look at the month for the school year, 149,400 in, 222,500 out, within ending balances 772,536. Here is the student coffee shop, because they're just getting cranked up for the year. They have an ending balance of 5321. And in the North River Hills Consortium Fund, if you'll recall, last month we did have a balance of 80,000, and that would be going out in September. And you can see that that went out, so we currently have no balance in that fund. That will probably be that way for October as well, before our first quarter tuition bills go out. And with that, entertaining, any questions for the board?
Any questions for Doug?
I do have one back on our food service account. Before I came on the board, I take, we recently changed our food service collection policy as far as payments. Are we doing a better job of keeping our balance up in that? I know it does go negative at some time, but are we getting?
For students.
For students?
Yes, we've always been real fortunate. We've never had a large amount of unpaid fees within the food service. I believe even last year, there was roughly $5,000. That's really our highest end. So, and that's total for all of our school buildings. A lot of ways that that's offset, and helping parents to be able to pay that off and pay that back. There's a lot of districts across the state where that's tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, and we're very low on that. So, I think that helps with our overall balance and dollars that are in that account. But also really is a testament just to our relationships within our buildings, our secretaries talking with parents, our food service department talking with parents to make sure that they understand where they're at with their balances, and then making sure that those are up to date.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Doug? Hearing none, then we'll place the Secretary's financial report on file for audit. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to the information report regarding the Iowa assessments, the Pam and Dan Show tonight.
I'm hoping it's more of the Pam Show than the Dan Show. A lot better looking than I am, I know that. No, we are excited to be here to share with you some of our results of our Iowa assessments that were taken last spring. The timing on these, of course, we wish we could get this information out to everybody sooner than this, but by the time the assessments get sent back in, we don't get the results until the end of the school year during the summer. By the time we get all the different reports and things ready to go, we start the school year and start to analyze that process. So, tonight, we're going to just share with you a little bit of background on the Iowa assessments. We'll talk a little bit about some of the analysis that we do as a district, as well as what happens at the building levels and so forth. So, we'll jump right in. Just to give you a little background on the administration of the tests, the state does require the assessments for all grades 3 through 8 and grades 11. At Cedar Falls, we assess all of our students in grades 3 through 11. So, even though students at grades 9 and 10 are not required by the state currently, we choose to assess all of our classes, all of our grade levels. The tests are administered in reading, math, and science. They must be given in the spring. The Iowa assessments were actually revised in 2011, 2012, and that did have some impact on student achievement that you'll be able to see in a couple of our graphs that we show a little bit later. And we have a new assessment coming our way. It starts this year, as much as we know at this point in time. And we'll share a little bit of information about that when we get to the end. I will share with you as well that tonight, we're just going to share with you kind of a snapshot of examples of the types of data that we actually analyze. If we try to show you everything that we collect and analyze, we'd be here until next Wednesday. And I know all of you would like to get to the Powder Puff volleyball tonight at 7:00 o'clock. So, we're gonna just give you maybe a dipstick of some of the types of things that we analyze. We're showing you mainly all of our students. We have not disaggregated any of this data with our subgroups, whether they're free and reduced lunch, special needs. Just be aware that we do analyze all of that data, not only at the district level, but at the building level as well. Okay?
So, when we analyze the data, there's basically three cohorts that we look at. The first is the cross-sectional, and that's looking at the same grade level over time. So, it might be 6th grade in 2015, 16, 6th grade in 16, 17, et cetera. Another way we look at the data is the simple cohort group, and that's looking at all students as they go through the grades. So, we'd be comparing the students, all students in 5th grade, then all students in 6th grade, compared to all students in 7th, because we are looking for growth for the students. And then we also look at a matched cohort. And a matched cohort is basically looking at only those students who have been in Cedar Falls. So, if they're in Cedar Falls in 5th grade, in 6th grade, in 7th grade, those are the students we look for in our matched cohort. And then the other thing that we really look at is the expected growth. In 2015, they started looking at the growth continuum as far as where would a student be expected to grow. And they have five growth bands, and within those bands, they even break it down further. So, if you're in the 0 to 10 percentile rank, they look and say, "Okay, this is how many NSS points you should grow." So, we're gonna take a minute and look at reading first. And in each of the areas of reading, math, and science, we actually have a proficiency chart. And this chart helps us to delineate which category the students fall into each year. And I went too fast, sorry. The first one we're going to show you is how the district compares with the AEA and the state. And so, the burgundy on the left side, that is how our district students are performing. And this shows the 3rd through 6th grade. And then we actually have the 7th through 11th grade too. As you can see right now, that we are scoring actually higher than the other school, or the average in the AEA and the state. And then we want to share with you our 6th, 9th, and 11th grade information. So, this would be cross-sectional, and we decided to go 6th, 9th, and 11th, because those are the years right before their transitional years. And so, if you look at our 6th grade students, you can see from 13, 14, all the way through 17, 18. And what we're really hoping is that our advanced proficient growth grow. And you can see in this case, they did, but we also want our not proficient to go down a little bit too. So, this would be our 6th grade data, and there again, this is the cross-sectional data. And our 9th grade, do you want to say?
Yeah, this would be our 9th grade. And again, like Pam said, what you really want to do is see a downward trend at the bottom, where you have fewer students that are non-proficient. And then you want to see the lighter shade at the top to actually grow. So, we actually have more students that are reaching that advanced proficient. And this is our 11th grade. You're gonna, just as a side note, you're gonna see some anomalies when we start looking at our 11th grade achievement. We've been studying this for the last several years, and you'll see that our 11th graders, especially when you look at some of our growth data, or you see the data as they go through our system, that our 11th graders do not perform as well as they did when they were 10th graders, 9th graders, 8th graders. A lot of this is motivation for those students at 11th grade. Those students, a good share of those students are getting ready for ACT tests, and they don't see a lot of value to the Iowa assessments. They do not, we do not have any kind of a graduation requirement to do well on the Iowa assessments. And so, some of our students don't take it quite as seriously as they can. Ironically, as we look at the data, you'll see that our students actually perform a little bit lower in reading, but in math and science, that's not as pronounced. And so, we'll share that as we get to that as well.
So, we're moving right ahead to math, and we'll show you the same information. So, the first, it's a very similar proficiency chart. The numbers are not exactly the same. They are different in the reading, math, and science. And we're gonna show you the comparison with the AEA and state. And there again, you can see Cedar Falls students are outperforming the AEA and the state at this time. And then once again, we're gonna take a look at the cross-sectional data. And this would be our 6th graders in math.
And again, this is our 9th grade in math, and then the 11th grade in math. And you can see with the look at that, our 11th grade students, especially now, we would like to see those students, a lot more students that would be in that advanced proficiency by the time they're at the 11th grade.
And then here's the science data too. So, here's our proficiency ratings. Our comparison with the state. And one of the things that we look at too is if our core is sufficient. And we know that right now, the Iowa assessment is not completely aligned with the core, but with our next assessment with the ISAS, it's supposed to be. And so, what we'll be looking at is 80% proficient, because if it's not, that might tell us we have a core issue, and we need to dig a little deeper into our curriculum. And here's the 7th through 11th. And then here, once again, is the cross-sectional data with our 6th grade. 9th grade. And then the 11th grade data.
I think the next few slides are probably the most important that we share, not only with you as a board, but with our staff and our students and parents, because it really is a focus on growth. And we're very fortunate that over the past several years, there's been much more of an emphasis at the state level to provide us with growth data. We have not been receiving a lot of data on growth itself from students that move through the system. And so, that's the kind of data that we've had to dig up ourselves and look at our data that way. So, much of our attention right now is focusing on growth as much as it is one year to the next year. So, as Pam mentioned earlier, the first part that we look at is called simple cohort growth. And what that does is it compares students in each grade level or cohort as they move through our system. What it also includes is all, any student that might move in or move out. So, a student that might have been in 7th grade this year, but moved in from another community last year, they're included in that growth data even though they weren't here. So, it's more of a look at just each group of kids as they move through the system. But it may not, that's why we're now looking at matched growth, because it gives us a better picture of the students that actually have been with us all the way through. But it does, again, measures the percent of students in each proficiency level, and it's got, again, got the three levels that are determined by their NSS scores that's provided by the state. Okay, so this is a look at our current 12th grade class, last year's 11th graders, as they move through our system. And again, remind you that if you look at the black line, it's right in between, I feel like that's 2011, 2012, that's when the assessment was revised. And so, that had an impact on student achievement in these assessments all across the state, including in Cedar Falls, and especially in science, as you'll see that a little bit more. But this happens to be reading for that group of students that came all the way through. Again, in an ideal world, we like to see that downward trend in that bottom darker shaded red, because those are non-proficient students, so we want those to decrease every year. And we'd want to see the increase in the lighter shade up at the top. This is math, and as you can see, it's a little bit different than reading is looking through there. But there is that downward trend when we look at the non-proficiency students at the bottom. And then this is science as well, when we look at that same group. So, again, that is simple cohort groups. It includes students that are moving in and moving out.
So, next, we're looking at the matched cohort group. And this would be the group of students over time that would be in Cedar Falls. So, if they were 5th grade Cedar Falls, 6th grade. So if they were fifth grade Cedar Falls, sixth grade Cedar Falls, so it does not include move in and move out. The one thing that I do need to show, share our data with, or explain with the data, is if you look at our number at the bottom, it actually shows different numbers, and you're thinking, how can that be? And that's something we question the state, so they are actually correcting the data for us. What happens is there's different filters they use at the state. And so they put in whether you reside in Cedar Falls. Well, right now, the students that attend, attend St. Pat or Valley Lutheran reside in Cedar Falls. And if they continue on to our high school, they accidentally have pulled those into our data. So that's why the N is different. And so the state is working on that. They actually said kudos to Cedar Falls. They said, you guys are the first ones that brought that to our attention. So thank you, Dan, for that. So actually, this would be our 11th grade, and so these would be the students who resided in Cedar Falls over time. And we will be getting corrected data on this.
Unfortunately, the state only keeps that data back six years. So we can't go all the way back to when those students were in third grade and look at them all the way through. They'll only provide that data from their, from the last six years.
And then here would be our science, I'm sorry, this would be math. And then our science data.
The next thing that we look at is what we call the expected growth. And again, this is something the state has been recently providing for us, is, is a level of expectations, or what they would call realistic growth from students from one grade to the next grade. Traditionally, we've always said we want to see students make at least a year's worth of growth. Well, that usually depends on what they, you know, where, where were they when they started? And so expected growth gives us a little bit of better understanding of what, what is realistic for a student at, at a specific score from one year to the next. So this first chart that you see, the bottom dashed line that you see right there is proficiency. That, that identifies that where that line would be if a student is above that line to be proficient. The, the green lines that you see up there, that's the average growth that each one of our classes had this past year. So if you look at from grades three through four, you can see that our average growth was 23. Well, that was above what the expected growth would be for that particular grade level. And so that's why it's green, because that's good. You see also, at our 12th, or excuse me, our 11th grade year, you see a decrease. And again, that's one of those things I talked about earlier, is why does that happen? We're still above proficiency as far as the state is concerned, but we don't see the growth that we'd like to see at that 11th grade year. This again is our growth in mathematics. And unfortunately, the state does not provide this data in science for us yet. So we, we can only look at this data and with reading and math. The other thing that the state does is that they, they gives, they give us data with regards to what they call bands, and that's different performance levels. And they base it on five different performance levels. That again is on the NSS score that students receive, as well as national percentile rank. So the average growth within, within each band is compared to the expected growth within a band is determined by the state. And I'll show what that means in a second. And again, the expected growth is that, you know, that realistic growth that would be expected for students within that particular growth band. So to share with you, these are the five different growth bands, and this happens to be for reading. And so if you click it again, for example, if a student at the sixth grade level scored a 227, their expected growth the next year would be to be at the 239. Now, that sounds good, and that sounds, you know, if you make that 239, then you're making expected growth. The problem with that is if you look at the students that are in those lower bands, a lot of those students are not yet proficient. So they need to make more than expected growth for them to be able to catch up. And so we are more concerned, or very concerned, about the students that might be in those lower two bands. And you'll see, as we move forward on the next slides, how that plays out.
So what we're showing you here is our fourth grade students who were fifth grade last year. And you can see on the left side, it starts with that first band, and those are the students in the first through 10th percentile rank. And they had an expected NSS growth of six, but we grew 16. So those are the kids on the lower end of, their scores are lower on the assessment. So we know that in order for them to close the gap, they're going to actually have to make more gains than that six points. And one of the things that I think is interesting to look at here is if you look at the N under our numbers, if you look at the 35th to 65th, and then the 66th to 89th, and 90th to 99th, look at how many students that we have in that upper end. So when we're looking at this, one of the things that it tells us is, we really need to be working with that upper end now to make sure that they're making at least that expected year's worth of growth, too. And so this is an example in reading. We have, whoops, we have the same grade levels in math. And then we also have the same grades in science.
And also put this a little bit into perspective, and you think about the five different growth bands. Proficiency is somewhere in, between the, the second and the third growth band. And so you might have some students that are actually in that number two growth band that we would consider not meeting expectations, but actually in comparison to the state, that those scores would actually be classified as proficient.
So stated another way, to make sure I'm understanding these graphs. So based on these graphs, we're doing a very good job of students who are on the lower end that need to do, need to catch up, because, and they're exceeding what we'd expect them to growth. But where we have additional work to do is those who are on the higher end, and giving them opportunities to, to meet or exceed the expected growth of where they're at.
That would be a correct statement. And even though we've just shown you basically fourth through fifth, fourth to fifth, that pattern is, is, is pretty persistent in all of our grade levels. So the other thing to keep in mind is that the higher you get up into the proficiency scale, the more difficult it is to increase that score more than the expected growth. But still, that's an area that we have focused on. You'll see in our little summary that we'll talk about, that we really want to focus on those kids at the high end, because we want those students to improve as well. Proficiency's not good enough for us in Cedar Falls, and it shouldn't be good enough for our students. So we want to really push those students to do as well as they can, regardless of whether they're proficient or in the advanced proficient level.
And we have a site called EdInsight that we can use. It's from the state, and we can actually break this data down even into student, by student. So there again, it's that student by student, skill by skill. We just need to go a little further, but we're not sharing that with you tonight.
And I think to state it another way, too, to, to make it a little bit more simplistic, is in the past, we might have a student that was in the 99th percentile in fifth grade, being the 99th percentile in sixth grade, but not grow. So this actually allows us to dig deeper into the data to show what is that growth per student, and whether or not they are actually gaining not just a percentile rank or a percentage of where they relate to other students in their similar age group.
It's now based on that growth continuum, and it really gives us a lot more detail.
And a lot of that work is done at the building level, because they can identify each of those individual students that might not be making that growth, and develop some strategies and some, some interventions for those students as well. So in summary, as we look at all of our data together, excuse me. You know, our students continue to outperform the students across the state in the AEA, and you've seen that, and we've, we've been that way for every year. But we're beyond that as a district, because we really want to focus our students and compare us with ourselves and with other schools that, that we consider to be high achieving. And while we talked before that, that the gaps, and we didn't show you any of our subgroup data tonight, but we do see that that gap is shrinking in the majority of our, of our, our, our classes and our students. Those subgroups continue to perform at higher levels. As we stated, too, the focus is on growth. We're, we're looking more at, you know, how are students doing as they move through our system, and not worried as much about going, looking at fifth grade to fifth grade to fifth grade from year to year. That gives us good program, programmatic data, and whether or not we're making the, the changes in the curriculum that we need. But in looking at student by student, we really want to focus on the growth piece. And, and this is the point you made, Jeff, is that our lowest achieving students continue to outperform what their expected growth is every year. Our focus now, especially the last couple of years, have been on that, that higher achieving student, and what do we do to, to get them to continue to grow as well? You want to talk about the new assessment?
Sure. Next year, we're going to have a new assessment. It's called the Iowa Statewide Assessment of Student Progress, or the ISAS. We can choose.
There's not a less being that.
We can choose whether to do an online or paper pencil assessment. And they're actually going to be having workshops for us in November, and so some of those decisions will be made at that time. It is going to be more expensive to do the paper pencil version than the online. And we also know within three years, they're going to have a computer adaptive assessment. So if we want it to be adaptive, we're going to have to go with the technology piece. But those are decisions yet to be made after we get more information. It's supposed to be better aligned with the Iowa Core standards. It's going to be reading, math, and writing in grades three through 11, and science is only going to be five, eight, and 10 right now. The reading and math and science assessments are going to be about a 60-minute assessment, and the writing, language arts component will be 120 minutes. It's going to, all of the growth data and stuff, we will not actually have available until next fall. So that will affect some of the things that we do and some of the decisions we make over the summer, but they're not going to be able to norm it until everybody has completed the assessment for next year. We also know it does have to be completed in the spring of the year. And the one thing they're saying, it has to be within the last 12 weeks. What we don't know is if it's going to be, like, everybody takes the math assessment, or so many schools get the first and second week, so many the third and fourth week. I hope it doesn't, because a 12-week span is a lot of time to still continue, be continuing teaching. But those are things that still have to be determined, as of last week.
So that'd be about it. So will entertain any questions, any additional questions that you may have.
So what impact do you perceive that learning-based grading is having on the assessments?
Well, we would hope that the assessments, if, if they're true in the fact that they're going to be much more aligned to the Iowa Core standards, then that falls right in with what we're doing with learning-based grading, because we're actually assessing students based on whether they've learned the, the standards and the essential learnings within each of those classes and courses and grade levels. So it, it would just be another summative assessment that our students would get that would be aligned with what we're doing every single day in, in classes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, looking at the data, I don't see, I don't perceive, but I'm not looking at the data in the same detail.
Yeah, it'll be interesting what kind of data we'll be able to share with you when the new assessments come out. We don't know. Next year will kind of be a baseline data for us to find out where, where are we, and how well do we align with the Iowa standards? I think there'll be a, a lot of people around the state that will be really analyzing the assessment to say, does it truly align with the Iowa Core or not? You know, we've been told there's a better alignment, but how much better, we don't know that.
I think what's going to be interesting, too, is as we look at the, the new assessment, it's supposed to be targeted towards more critical thinking, application of, of skills, especially with the more adaptive online versions. Right now, the, the, the current Iowa assessments are really more based on knowledge and, and kind of informational facts. So as we know that our learning-based grading is much more focused on, how do you apply the knowledge that you have so you can utilize that in real-world applications? Our assessments currently aren't that way at the state level, but hope to be in the future to better align with what we're doing in our classrooms.
We do have a little concern about the, the writing assessment that was shared last week at our Urban Education Network, because a couple of the schools that were actually part of a pilot on that last year, especially on the writing side, they said especially for the younger students that don't have the keyboarding skills that they need yet, that can have a negative impact on their, on their proficiency levels if they have poor keyboarding skills. So that's why I think they're also allowing schools to continue to use the paper pencil, even on just the writing proportion if you want.
They've said there's also going to be some tools on the technology piece, where you can do highlighting. It will also eliminate answers. And so if a lot of our kids haven't had those experiences, that's kind of hard for them, too. So we're just anxious to hear more.
Who developed this assessment?
I believe it was Pearson and Iowa.
Pearson, okay.
Yep, the, the contract was, was through Iowa Testing, but they went ahead and they partnered directly with Pearson. So they both kind of, I guess, developed this coherently together.
There are a few schools that actually have done some pilots with the writing. And they said, one of their concerns was that it actually was the computer scored. And so it wasn't really looked as much at the content as maybe how much they wrote. But we don't, there again, those are answers, we don't know what's going to happen or how those things are going to be scored yet. Go ahead, Eric.
Back, the 11th grade dip, I guess, that you were talking about, that, do we have any information on, is that a common thing in other districts?
Just in the communications that we've had with other districts, that's consistent with other schools, that, that 11th grade year is a difficult year to motivate kids for the Iowa assessments. And I think a lot of schools have tried whatever they can with, you know, little hokey contests and things like that, which we've never done. But I think, again, I think we, we, you know, we, we have to let students know that, that those do, those scores do stay on their transcripts. And so those, at some place, those get transferred over, and people may look at those, even though they're not something that's consistent with what they need for graduation, or it has no impact on their, on their ACT scores or anything like that.
So if you look back to where the, the slides that had the AEA and the state comparison, that can kind of show you what's happening throughout the state, too.
Suzie? Go ahead.
So obviously, when we compare ourselves to the rest of the state, we're, we're a leading school. We, and, and we, we do, we do really, really well. As I think about our school district, I, I say, well, how, I want our kids to be able to compete with the leading high schools across the nation. Is there any way to use this data to be able to compare it with, you know, other leading high schools across the, across the nation?
Only if they took the Iowa assessments, could you compare apples to apples. That would be the only way I could think. There's just so many variables, I think it would be really difficult.
Is, are there other schools beyond the state of Iowa that are going to take the ISAP?
I don't.
Yeah, I don't know. They've identified that it's going to be customized towards the Iowa Core, which, you know, how, how different are, are our Core standards as a state compared to other states? Probably not a whole lot. So there might be a little bit better comparison. But, but again, it's an assessment that's being developed in Iowa for Iowa students. So how are we going to be able to compare with other states? That'll remain to be seen.
So I think you hit on a really interesting topic that's been about three years in the making. When, when this was approved by the legislature three years ago, it was going to be called, and we're going to use the model, Smarter Balanced, and that was an assessment that's been now utilized in over 40 states. So there would be some comparative data. But last year, the legislature came back, and, and there was some concern that it wasn't an Iowa company, so they said it needed to go through the Iowa Testing Services. And, and that's where they partnered with Pearson to create a statewide assessment that's been now classified as ISAS. So it's not going to give us some of the data that we hoped it would, nor does it have the maybe fidelity that the Smarter Balanced Assessment was going to provide to us, because that was much more nationally based.
In the spring, they even threw it out that they were going to be calling it the ICAPS, Iowa Comprehensive of Assessment Progress. And then just this fall, when we came back to school, we learned they were changing it to the ISAS, so.
The only current assessment that is given across the nation is the NAEP test, and it's, it's a snapshot of, of some students across the state. Every year, we have one or two grade levels out of one of our buildings that's identified to assess students with the NAEP. And that does give us comparison data, but it's probably not reliable. We only assess a, a small number of our own students, and that's across the state and across the nation. So it's not a true assessment of everybody.
Yeah, and they actually don't send us data back by our students, so it's really hard to break it down.
So we were very hopeful that the Smarter Balanced would be approved and, and come to fruition. Even, I think it was supposed to, to be in existence last year, but through the legislative process, it was slowed down and then, then eliminated. So we, we are hopeful about ISAS, but we just don't know a lot of great details yet as far as what that data is going to look like, or even what the assessment's going to look like for, for student learning.
Did the Iowa Department of Education make that decision, or was it our legislators that made that decision?
So there was a pretty extensive process that had a study group and recommendations to the State Board of Education, where they went with Smarter Balanced, and, and that was actually through the Department of Education and the State Board of Education. But the legislative process thought that that was not necessarily the, the right approach, and, and that's where then they passed legislation this past year to then go to the state. to then go to the statewide Iowa assessments and Iowa, University of Iowa, to have them work through this. And they chose to partner with Pearson, which is now why we have ISAS.
Because our legislators are all educators and know so much more than our educators that we're working on Smarter Balance. You don't need to answer that.
No, I think out of that, I think out of that committee, which was, you know, there were a lot of local educators and teachers, administrators across the state that served on that three or four years ago, that study group that made the recommendation. And I want to say it was nearly unanimous, like 20 out of 21 members that said Smarter Balance makes sense, it's the right assessment, it's aligned, and it's going to provide the data that we need to have for student growth. And I think there was quite a bit of disappointment across the educational circles that the decision came from the legislators to move in a different direction. I think that's a very fair statement.
And I think we, as board members, saw a very strong lobbying effort on behalf of a specific part of the state, yes, to move this way. So that is disappointing.
One of the benefits of belonging to the UEN is we do have people at our UEN curriculum meetings that actually have been on some of these committees. So they're able to report back to the rest of us kind of what's going on and what's happening. And that's very helpful.
Any other questions?
I do. Can we tie any of the timing of our changes in professional development to some of the changes in the scores? Do we see any possible benefit from what we've done in professional development that we might attribute to changes in scores?
I can share with you, one of the things that we a lot of times see at the elementary is when we're focusing on reading, our reading scores tend to go up. And our math scores might dip a little. And when we focus on math, we see just the opposite. So that's one of the things that we continuously watch.
I would say too that, you know, even though this assessment that we believe is not as aligned to the Iowa Core as we would like it to be, a lot of our core areas still do an item analysis of the assessments to say, how did our students do in this area, this area, or this area? And if we are looking at maybe some of those item analysis areas that are not where we would like them to be, then we look at what we can do in terms of not just curriculum-wise, but, you know, do we need some additional skills for our teachers to teach that or not? But traditionally, when we've looked at that in item analysis, we scored fairly well on those, as you would see just in looking at our overall data. So I think, you know, what our focus has been, especially with learning-based grading, is to tie our essential learnings to the Iowa Core standards and making sure that our assessments are aligned to those as well. So if we do have a state assessment that is truly aligned with the Iowa Core, then our students should do very well on those.
And it's not really PD, but our collaborative teams, I think, make a huge impact on this. We have, again, a tremendous staff that during their collaborative team time really focuses on what are the skills that students need? Where are the skill deficiencies and skill gaps? What do we do to make sure that we accelerate students in the right ways? We always have additional work on that each and every week, each and every day. But certainly, those collaborative teams not directly denoted to PD because it's all about collaboration, the student data, and what are we doing within our strategies and pedagogy. But that makes a huge impact on our overall data and student learning.
The other question I had was the timing. We still, the 12-week window was the same whether for Iowa assessments or the ISAS? Is that, or roughly the same?
Yeah, I think there might have been a little bit smaller window for the Iowa assessments. But, you know, I think the 12-week window is a concern to us, especially if they go in waves. I think there's some concern about if they try to get every student in Iowa online at the same time, that it could crash the system. And so they're, in some way, they're going to come up with some groups of students that would do it this week, this week, and this week. And like Pam said, that if you're in one of those last groups to be assessed, you have 12 more weeks of instruction than maybe some school that had to give it in the first week. So how are they going to take that into consideration on the data as well? So again, there's a lot of questions that still need to be answered, and we just don't know that.
So we may not have control over things like we're taking this assessment the day after spring break or the morning of the change in time for daylight savings time?
We hope there's some flexibility, but we just don't know that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Sasha had a question.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to follow up on the 11th grade question and think about the value of the assessment for that group of students, given that many of them are taking the ACT, like you mentioned, or are taking advanced placement courses or dual enrollment. And they've just got a lot of other things that are making them sort of divergent as a group by that stage in their academic career. And I just wonder if we could be using other metrics to compare them and get more national comparisons through things like ACT scores.
Yeah, and that's, there are some states that use the ACT as their assessment, their state assessment. And so that would, again, give you maybe a bigger picture look across the nation as the Iowa assessment does. But right now, you know, because of the expense of that, I think in one way, that's a much more expensive test. And so if a school district has to pay for all of their 11th graders to take the ACT, it gets to be pretty pricey. And again, you know, we are required to give the Iowa assessments to grades 11.
And that's always been the case, where that's been a requirement through 11th grade?
Yeah, I think it's important to note too, that's where a lot of our internal summative formative assessments, pre and post-testing, to be able to show what are our students doing and can they apply what we believe our essential learnings are, core content standards, based on the Iowa Core, to make sure students are learning those at high levels and then can apply those into real-life situations. And that's important for us as a system.
So another, just question about, it's not the future assessment, but our past assessment. Are we able to link long-term success of students and call them, you know, citizens? That they turn into citizens and they go on and have productive and contributors to society by those who achieve a high score on their standard assessment tests? And they are also successful people in life? That's a very philosophical answer.
You want to answer that? You may not like the answer that I give you to that.
Yes, we have not done the kind of correlation in the study of that, but there's been national studies that have been done, research analysis, to be able to show where students are at based on their state assessments and where they are at later in life for success. And I think what you typically find, and I have to go back and research some of those, is that students that typically are more creative, more adaptive, more innovative, that might be in the mid-ranges of 60 to 80 to 90, sometimes even have more high quality of life when they kind of rate themselves than somebody that could even have a 99. So there's a lot of variations in there. You have to look at not just what are your assessments in your rote memorization skills, but what are all those other components? And as we've had presentations, you know, what are your critical thinking? What are your communication skills? What are your creativity skills, your adaptability skills? As we look at trying to provide that well-rounded education for kids because it's not just solely based on one assessment.
Yeah, no, and I think that's sort of my, well, that's the point is, at the same time, these assessments are important for us to measure progress and stuff like that. But at the same time, if all of our sole focus is on our kids, you know, just achieving a 99 on everything, have we forgotten about all the other, the well-rounded things? Because we all know the stories about kids who dropped out of school or dropped out of college and, you know, and went on to have extremely successful lives in, you know, in business or other endeavors, so.
There's probably more studies with regards to grade point average and success in life. And unfortunately, when you look at the students that graduate with the highest GPAs, that doesn't necessarily correlate with success in later life. And there's quite a bit of studies out there that would share that it actually works the other way.
And I think tonight, we shared the Iowa assessment data, but we really look at the whole child and the social, emotional, and all the other components that go with that too.
So other board members on, that have been here maybe a little longer remember that this is a presentation that typically in the past was maybe two hours long, sometimes even maybe longer than that. We've tried to condense it down because there's so much data here, but it's one snapshot. It's one point in time, it's one day, one week, one assessment. And we really want to make sure everybody understands, we take it seriously, we review the data, but also understand it is a snapshot in time. So I think that's important. Sometimes we get caught up when we're talking about this as the presentation of the moment. But there's so many other components that go into this, as you just pointed out.
Dan and Pam, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board, for your questions. Okay, moving on to item G, the approval of the SBRC application for modified allowable growth. Mr. Nusker.
Thank you. If we want to pull the slide up, I always comment, and I'm amazed when I listen to what Janelle talks about every meeting and Dan and Pam tonight. And now you have to listen to me talk about resources. So this is our annual request to the School Budget Review Committee for increase enrollment, open enrollment out, and LEP instruction. And it consists of a couple of parts.
Remind us again for other viewers, LEP?
Oh, Limited English Proficient, excuse me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The first part of the application is for an increased enrollment. And we're very fortunate that the district has a certified enrollment increase of 111.1 students. And so you can see by doing the math, that's 748,591 dollars and 80 cents. If you want to go to the second slide, this is the part that talks about additional open enrollment out. If the board will recall, last year, we did receive some dollars in this section of the application because we actually had a flat year certified enrollment-wise, but we had more students open enroll out. So that's why you save the money. This year, it's the reverse. Obviously, we had 22.3 more open enroll out students or first-time open enrollment out students than last, than last year. But with our enrollment being as high as it was, you subtract the differences in negative 88.8, so we don't qualify for anything. If we go to the third slide, this is the English language learners or ELL or LEP students. We had 11 of those, and that weighting is a 2.42. So that's another $16,306 in round numbers. So the total request to the School Budget Review Committee and before the board tonight is $764,897.76. And this request, if the board approves it and the School Budget Review Committee would approve it, will provide additional budget authority for the current school year.
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a motion to approve the SBRC application for modified allowable growth?
I move that the Board of Directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the modified supplemental amount application to the School Budget Review Committee for increasing enrollment, open enrollment out, not in, Fall 2017, and ELL instruction beyond five years for the 2018-19 school year as presented.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second? Second? It's been moved and seconded by Suzie. Any questions or comments? Jeff?
Doug, will this raise property taxes?
That's a little early to tell yet. We don't, we don't have the total scope of what our assessments will be or what the assess valuation throughout the district will be yet. So we don't know that. We don't know what we're going to have for cash flow needs for next year. Will we sort of start to fine-tune that here over the next few months? We really will be able to fine-tune it even more when we get to January, when we receive the assessments, assess valuation throughout the district from the county. A little hard to say yet. My hope would be no, but I wouldn't, but I can't promise that.
So the way that this could translate into additional property taxes, it would come to the board as a cash reserve?
Correct.
Is, so it'd be an additional action that the board would take upon further information, like you said, like in January?
And that'll be all a part of the budget presentation in March. And we'll kind of take a stronger look at that. Or somebody will take a stronger look at that, I guess, after the first of the year. And I've worked toward that determination. My hope would be that that overall tax rate would be similar. I don't want to promise anything, it's way too early to do that.
I think it's important to note that the challenge is when you're growing a district with 111 students increase, we're serving those students this year. We received no funding for those students. So the dollars expended to ensure that those students are getting a high-quality education that we all expect does not come from funding from the state, does not come from any funding other than what we have in our cash balances at this time. So this gives the authority for us to be able to recoup those cash balances if necessary in the future.
Yeah, and just to be clear, that the reason why we're not receiving additional funding is because we're one-year in arrears on our funding. So next year, we will get the credit for the additional students that we have this year.
Yes, and hopefully, we'll be a growing, continued growing district. So we'll continue to serve more students than what we have funding for because we'll continue to increase enrollment.
Right.
The School Budget Review Committee has authority over this request too, am I right? Do they generally accept what we ask?
This is a blanket acceptance across the state by the SBRC, unless there's something that was not filed correctly or inappropriate with the data that they collect and receive as well.
Unless you're about to be retired, business manager forgets to push the button tomorrow, we should be okay.
He won't.
Oh, I won't.
Any other questions for Doug? Okay, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on now to item H on the agenda, the approval of the agreement to sell the property on First Street to the City of Cedar Falls. Mr. Nusker.
And we do have one slide on this. And just a reminder to the board, we've talked about this a couple of times. The City of Cedar Falls is planning on reconstructing West First Street. And they need about eight feet of frontage along First Street where the administrative center is. And we've, we talked to the board about that a little over a month ago. We've agreed to sell the property to the city for $1. And we held a public hearing, and we had no comments on that. So our recommendation would be to go ahead and move forward and sell that strip of property to the city for the $1. And I think all the, I didn't put all the documents on the PowerPoint. That would have taken another half an hour. And, but all of you have them in your board packet and to move forward with the process.
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a motion to approve this sale of this property?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the owner purchase agreement, owners temporary grading easement for construction, warranty deed, and real estate transfer, groundwater hazard statement for the sale of a portion of property located at 1002 West First Street to the City of Cedar Falls and authorize the board president and board secretary to sign all documents related to this transaction.
Thank you, Jenny. Do I have a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded by Sasha. Any questions or comments?
Just a recollection, right, that there's some work with a sign that the city has agreed to do?
There is, that's, so, go ahead. Oh, that's one of the addendum components that talks about landscaping and other items on the site, that the sign right now is in the temporary easement, so that needs to be removed. And then it'll be set back into the, close to the current location, offset from the new sidewalk.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on now to the SBRC application for Aldridge Elementary startup costs. Again, Doug.
And last time, this is a little bit of an unusual request. We haven't come to the school board for this probably ever. Because the last time we opened up a brand-new building was in the late '60s. And so this is a request to the School Budget Review Committee for modified supplemental amount associated with the startup costs for our new Aldridge Elementary School. And there basically are four categories associated with that. And category A is new expenses to the district. And what that's saying there, that $312,000, is we actually have a total of nine new employees that were directly assigned to Aldridge Elementary. Now, that's a combination of teachers, par educators, clerical staff, custodial staff. That's not, that's not nine teachers, that's nine employees. Category B is a replacement cost to the district. We had seven employees, again, it can be a teacher, a building principal, clerical staff, par educator, custodian, et cetera, that was employed by the district, that transferred or to Aldridge Elementary. And then that vacancy was filled by a new employee. Category C is transferred employees from other schools. There's 23 employees that transferred into Aldridge above the, two above, two categories above. Those are current employees within the district. They're now going to be at Aldridge Elementary. Their position at the other school was not backfilled. So that would be a zero. And then category D is categorical funded employees in that, in a fancy... And then category D is categorical funded employees in that, in a fancy way of saying special education employees, preschool employees. Those are the two main categories, and there's no funding for that because the SBRC does not grant startup cost authority for categorical employees. So the total for employees is 547, excuse me, $574,592. If we go to this next slide, this is the other item that we can request, and that's materials and supplies to start the building, to get the building going. You can see the list. We broke that down by, I guess I want to say, individual department or different section. You can see the media center is the big winner here. It costs a nickel or two to buy books for a media center. And that's the big piece of that. The other one is general instruction that all the kids will be using, and then music. Those are the three big ones, as well as PE. You can't borrow balls from another school and take it to there because they still have students involved, that sort of thing. So that's why you see this amount, that's $266,600. So in summary, you can see, they're the employee and material costs. Facility operational costs, that would be utilities and that sort of thing, supplies to clean the building, that sort of thing. SBRC specifically does not allow those requests. Equipment for the building, that would be furniture for the building that we purchased, that sort of thing. Again, the SBRC does not allow that request. Their logic is that when you build a budget to construct a new building, you include the cost of furniture and equipment in that budget. And then nutritional fund costs also are not allowed, so the cost for the furniture and the extra staff for the nutritional fund is not allowed as well. So you can see, our total request is $841,296.3. This is a one-time, one-year request, and that would provide additional authority to this for the 2018-19 school year. Again, going back to Mr. Haseman's statement about, will this impact property tax? My comments about, hopefully, we can keep this more or less the same. I was thinking about this as well as the other item that the board approved earlier about the SBRC for on-time funding for enrollment. No guarantees, but our, but our hope would be that we can be roughly the same.
And we know spending authority is so important in the Iowa funding formula, it's actually more important than cash on hand, and that's why we're requesting this. And I think Mr. Orvis asked a question earlier, is this something that you present to the SBRC? And in this case, yes. Doug and I would have the great opportunity to go down and present before the School Budget Review Committee to make this request, if so approved by the board. We certainly think that this is a great opportunity to recoup that spending authority and have that within our overall budget authority, which is certainly important as we look short-term and long-term for our school district as a whole.
Right. Do I have a motion to approve the Aldridge startup costs?
I move that the Board of Directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the modified supplemental amount application totaling $841,209.63 to the School Budget Review Committee for startup costs associated with the new Aldridge Elementary School.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Orvis. Any questions or comments? Any further questions or comments?
So just from a mechanic standpoint, sorry, what's my, just from a mechanic standpoint, pardon. So the startup costs, the one-time startup costs, like media center, the arts, I mean, that, that part I understand because we shouldn't have to ever incur those again. I mean, we've bought the balls for the gym, we've bought the books for the library, or media center. The other expense as far as the personnel, though, that has to be absorbed in our general budget. This is a one-time spending authority increase that we get kind of on an exceptional basis because we're starting up a new school. But next year rolls around, and we've got to fold that into our normal authority for spending and in our normal, our normal budget. We don't, we don't get an exception for the second year.
No, we do not. You're absolutely correct.
Right.
As we designed and built the budget for not only this year but into the future, we anticipated that there would be an offset from the School Budget Review Committee for the spending authority. But as we look long-term, we know that that additional cost is something that we have to be able to plan for and budget accordingly. Mr. Nevsker, I think, was within about $7,000 plus or minus of the estimated cost to be able to start up a building, which is very commendable, knowing just how large of a scope that is.
Any other questions or comments?
And just a clarifying point, there's no guarantee that the School Budget Review Committee will give us this. They look at each individual school district on its own merits based on a number of factors. And so just because we're applying doesn't mean that we're going to be awarded the amount.
So what would be the consequences of not receiving it?
We don't get the authority.
We don't get the authority, and this is why we have extra authority in the event of something like this were to happen.
Okay, thank you.
So just, we don't anticipate that there will be a problem, but it, they look at every individual school on its merits when these, when these unique or non-normal situations come up.
Okay.
Is it all or nothing, or do they, can they look into it and say, I don't think you need this and this and this?
That board is just like this board. They can slice and dice however they want.
Typically, they've allowed, you know, most of the recommendations for startup costs that we have, it's pretty well specified with a formula and what you can and can't ask for. I think the challenge is going to be if they start going through and see something, maybe this is questionable, give us more detail, or no, we don't believe that, that fits the definition. So, you know, we're pretty conservative as we look at what we recommend for them for approval, so we don't anticipate that happening, but you can never guarantee, or you never know.
And then a follow-up question, if they change, let's say they reduce the amount that they would allow us to, do we need to take action again before, and then it goes back to them, or?
No.
No, this one?
This is a request for us to go to them to request this amount, then it's up to them to decide if this is the amount or if it's less. It can't exceed this amount. It'll be this amount or less, and then that's a determination by the SBRC or the School Budget Review Committee.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to our PEPAL discussion. Dr. Patty?
Yes, now annually in October, we always give a presentation just on our physical plant and equipment levy, 10-year plan, something that was developed now two to three years ago, continuously refined and refreshed. If you pull up the PowerPoint, you'll start to see how this was developed, what this certainly means, and kind of the direction that we take with our physical plant and equipment levy. Just as a reminder to our community and also to our school board, physical plant and equipment levies, levy that is, has been approved and now extended by our community, I think, until 2029. It's dollars that are generated for specific purposes, for educational facility improvements and certainly improvements for our grounds around our buildings as well. So you'll see that our 10-year plan, if you go back one slide, really was to determine how do we weight projects, important, determine a kind of a factor of importance on different projects, because there are a lot of ongoing maintenance needs and ongoing preventive maintenance across our district. So you will see that there were three areas that we provided kind of a weighting system to. Number one, what is the educational improvement enhancement that that project provides? Number two, what kind of safety enhancement or improvement does that project provide? And then efficiency improvement, and efficiency is kind of widely determined as far as, it could be heating and cooling efficiency, it could be efficiency in personnel, efficiency in movement, so a lot of different factors with that. This allowed us to come up with a prioritization based on those weightings over multiple years and multiple projects. And then we assigned a year of completion for those projects based on, A, the weighting, and then also the budget that we received for the physical plant and equipment levy. So we'll kind of go deeper into this, but I wanted to show you kind of the big picture before we get to some of the projects and then the entire huge spreadsheet. So next slide shows you a little bit about as we set the budget. We first determined what are those annual expenditures that we know are going to be important for us to spend dollars on. Some of those are fleet and rotation of fleet, some of them are preventative maintenance with roof and masonry work. We also know how important technology is for us as a district, not only for students but for our staff. And then just ongoing kind of framework items with security equipment and network equipment and our servers and switches to make sure that those are upgraded annually on a rotational basis. That allowed us then to come up with kind of an annual cost projection for increases with inflation, but also to help determine then, how does that offset with our annual revenue increases that we anticipate with our physical plant and equipment levy? So this is just a brief snapshot of this entire large document. It starts to go through, and I guess I'll go through like, and it's hard to read, the water main replacement. This was something that we did, and this shows just a snapshot of the entire document. So this was something that was done last summer, water main replacement at Hanson. We knew that that, you can't run a building or you can't actually have a school operate without water. We know that the safety and security of our students, you can't have school without water. But we also know that this would provide great numbers or a level of efficiency because we wouldn't have to cancel school because we couldn't get water to the building. So that came across as a weighting of 10. Then that breaks down for the building, it breaks down as an anticipated cost, and it breaks down which year that fell into. The next slide kind of shows this as more of the annual costs that we just briefly talked about. Up on top, you'll see the different fiscal years, and this runs through fiscal year '27, '28. You'll see some of the inflationary costs that are built in with our bus rotation. You will see some other areas where maybe there's a higher rate of inflation factor because we know that there will be some additional expenditures. One line that I would point to would be the top green highlighted line, where it goes $100,000, $100,000, bumps up to $150,000. We knew that this upcoming fiscal year, there's some additional network equipment that has to be purchased due to some of the things that we have for students and staff that will continue then with a 2% inflationary cost across that category. But we also anticipate it up on top. You can see a 2% annual increase, which is a conservative estimate based on the amount of dollars we receive for a physical plant and equipment levy. Next slide gives you kind of a bigger snapshot of then what this looks like. It's multiple pages, it goes through multiple fiscal years, it has multiple different projects and multiple weightings. But rest assured, it's something that we really focus in on to ensure that the right projects are being done to provide those three areas of categories for our students, educational enhancements, safety and security, and efficiency. I'm going to pause before we go further.
Question about those five slides, three slides, actually.
So looking at the slide that just disappeared off the screen.
Yes.
So we, so fiscal year, this is going to be an eyesight challenge. $1.6 million is what we have for fiscal year '18. For '19 is 2.2, and then 1.5. So that's kind of what we're, those are the amounts that we're planning to spend out of the PEPAL budget on each one of those fiscal years?
So if you scroll back a couple screens, and you'll start seeing, oh, go one forward, sorry, you'll start seeing what the anticipated carryforward balance is. Those are all kind of estimates.
They're at the very bottom of it.
At the very bottom.
And then when you scroll, start scrolling down, you'll see what the projected revenue is. And way at the bottom of that following screen, you can follow through where some of the expenditures are, not only our annual expenditures. This sheet doesn't, or this slide doesn't show out two to three to four fiscal years, but at the bottom of the sheet, you'll start seeing some anticipated projects in fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23. But further down on these sheets, you'll start seeing where those projects are plugged in to be able to account for the amount of revenue received, to make sure that the weightings are accounted for. The next slide, I think, is kind of what you're interested in. What are some of those upcoming projects that we know will be coming up this upcoming summer? One, we knew that with our PEPAL plan, we were using a lot of our PEPAL dollars and our one-cent dollars to help offset the bond for elementary work. So we don't have a large amount of summer projects this upcoming summer. We do have some of our ongoing roof work that we have across our district. We're exploring and looking at a portable at Pete Junior High, which is something that we know we have continued to grow enrollment at Pete Junior High. We have multiple carpet replacement, and we have a carpet replacement cycle, similar to a roof work cycle, and then some unit ventilator replacement work that is ongoing across the district, part of our 10-year PEPAL project. The next slide shows some of those bigger picture items over the next several years, and those are placed further down based on budgetary needs as well as where they came out with our weighting and ranking. But you will see on our list is that bus garage renovation, relocation addition, just because our fleet is growing, some of the challenges of parking and needs on that site is growing. We know we're going to have to have classroom additions at Pete and Holmes Junior High, and that ties into our swimming pool replacement, short-term and long-term. What do our pool systems look like? What do our pool floor plans look like as we look at the space needed for kids in classroom spaces and the age of our pools? We have ongoing carpet replacements. We have some original sections of our Hanson Elementary that are still original for when that building was built that needed to be remodeled. We have some parking lot expansion, some parking needs at Holmes Junior High, junior high gymnasium and air conditioning. And then we have with some new, I guess, code requirements with some storm water runoff improvements at different sites and different locations, short-term and long-term. So each of those projects fit into that 10-year plan, depending on where they're slotted and where they're allocated for.
Is this list based on priority, versus going from one to eight? This is?
This is not a priority-generated list. This is just a list based on some of the projects that we know are upcoming, short-term and long-term. So some of these are going to have to go back through and continue to go back through, looking at what is the funding that we have for individual years, looking long-term, where are the priority at based on each of those projects, based on the weightings that we have for those three different categories, and then also based on where they can be slotted into the year.
How are the cost projections done for projects like these going all the way out to 2027?
So we work with a design team. We look at similar projects that have been either done in the district or outside of the district, and then we try to get a good estimate based on some contractor work that might be able to at least give us a ballpark. We have been very close on some, we've been under on others, and when we've estimated, sometimes we've been over. So we try to give a best guess based on a slot within a year, based on what the cost acceleration could be for those projects, but sometimes we don't know until we go through the bidding process. We make a best estimate. And that's where it's hard, especially when you plan out 10 years. We can say that we anticipated an addition at Holmes Junior High 70 years from now being $400,000, but it could be dramatically different 70 years from now. It's really about slotting and showing where these things could occur based on priorities, based on growth, based on revenue generated, and that's always hard.
And the qualification evaluating each one of those, who participates on the staff in deciding educational impact and efficiency and?
We have that go through really kind of some of our central administration. We've had some of our board members involved with that, with some of the committees, to help look at that and determine that. When we bring these projects back, we'll typically have some of our, and I can't remember which committee it's called, but one of our facility committees that will help review that, too.
And obviously, Mr. Gersmar, building the ground director, and myself are pretty heavily involved with that. He's our person that's feet on the ground, so to speak, and has a very intimate understanding of all of our facilities and grounds.
A lot of times, we get feedback from our, you know, different groups within our district as well, just to find out what are some of those needs that we need replaced. The challenge is with our roof replacement cycle, we have an outside vendor that comes in and helps us determine with our age allotment, with the needs of those roofs, and how that cycle looks from year to year based on a budget that we have set.
And you'll be seeing that updated plan probably here in the next month or two as we get back in to the regular annual roof replacement throughout the district.
Our next slide, then, moving into that. At the top of our 10-year physical plant and equipment levy needs was a high school. And we did not have a timeline associated with that. We knew that had to be outside funding, but we also know, hopefully, the physical plant and equipment can help offset some of those costs. You know, with that high school on the top of the plan, there are really four bullet points that we focus in on. A, what is that educational opportunity enhancement for our students? Just as we talked about earlier, it's the application of knowledge, the application of those core concepts, be able to have that ability to use critical thinking and creativity. And our spaces limit us for those opportunities at this time with our high school facility. It just does not allow for those. Student growth, we're continuing to grow, and we know that's extremely exciting, but also with the amount of programming that we offer and the but also with the amount of programming that we offer and the amount of enhancements that we offer for our high school students, what was, we were able to provide 40 years ago in that building does not meet the needs for the future. Safety and security are an ongoing concern for us as we look at that building, the number of doors and access points and just the way that the building is configured. And then also how important something like this is for economic growth. As we look at Aldridge Elementary, when you build it, people come, especially to a district that prides itself on educational excellence and enhancements, to a community that provides a lot of accoutrements and amenities, people want to be around where that excellence occurs to raise their family. On the next slide, you will see, and again, I always want to draw attention to the pictures, I don't really mention those, but you'll see just some of the spaces that we have. The lower levels where we had to run electrical bus ducking across the hallways because there is no other way to be able to access the amount of electrical needs, the output necessary, or the technology for some of these spaces otherwise, other than running those conduits and bus ducks around the hallways. How dark some of our areas are when you look at the lower left-hand business area where, and media centers where we expect our kids to be creative. And you walk in there and there's limited spaces, limited spaces to be able to have creativity centers or collaborative spaces for student learning. So as we look at the timelines for a new high school process and as we talk as a school board and look through, how do we make sure that this is done right with community input through the right processes? We're looking at one of four dates that are available to us per Iowa code. June 25, 2019 is the date that we're looking at for a school referendum for a high school. It's important to note that is based upon the legislature approving the one-cent sales tax extension, which means roughly, conservatively, about $30 million off of the ask of a school bond referendum for our community. May 10, as you back that up then, that is the date that we would have to have the petition to the school board. That allows us then throughout January and February to have community input sessions through October, November, December, looking at surveys, high school staff input, Insight Week participants to come back and be able to provide additional insight and guidance as well as multiple school board meetings. I think when Mr. Leeper was here from Invision Architects now about three meetings ago, he talked about the feedback that we received back from those Insight Week participants to talk about what does it mean to really have those spaces that excite, energize, and really help promote that educational excellence that we know we want to provide but are limited according to space that we just cannot allow and cannot do. So this is kind of the final slide that I have as we look at these timelines, but we know that this is an important part of our facility process as we look to the future. I think the last slide just shows questions, comments, as we continue down this path.
Questions or comments for Dr. Patty?
Going back to the previous slide, you mentioned that the bond issue would be contingent on the SAVE extension. Just to remind everyone that that would not increase our current tax structure at all, is that correct?
That is.
We're only asking that this be extended for a longer period of time.
Correct, and, you know, sometimes we lose sight of that because we live that every single day as school board members, school board and members of our school community. That runs through 2029. It's a one-cent penny sales tax that is distributed on a per pupil allotment across the state. What the recommendation is and the ask is for our legislature to extend that through 2049. And that generates, again, about roughly $30 million that would come off of the bond ask for a referendum for Cedar Falls. So it's a significant impact on that overall referendum. So important for us, important for our community, does not increase any kind of property tax rates. It's simply additional dollars that come from the state for this purpose.
Other questions or comments?
And just a comment, as we're looking at the full list, we as a district work very closely with the city in making sure if there are any places we can partner, if there are any places we can, you know, share resources. We do work with them closely to make sure that we're being very fiscally responsible, correct?
We do, and that includes you and I. We really try to work with multiple different partners to look at efficiencies, look at how do we allocate dollars efficiently and effectively. And we live in a community that we are certainly blessed to have those collaborative relationships. Everybody is working towards a similar end game to have low tax levy rates for our citizens and utilize those tax dollars efficiently. We have one of the lowest tax levy rates of the largest cities across the state of Iowa, and the reason behind that is we have good property assessments and growth across our community, but we also are mindful of how do we work together. I think the most recent example is the tennis courts. We all worked together to accomplish and did that for the right reasons, for the right purposes.
Good question. Any other questions?
And I'd be remiss without mentioning Cedar Falls Utilities in that conversation too because they provide so much for our community as we look at all the partnerships that we have to make sure that we're maximizing our dollars effectively.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item K, the board committee assignments.
The board committee assignments are in the packet, there's one addition, and I apologize, I left it off. Policy Review Committee with Jenny Leeper on that, she served on that role for multiple years. Appreciate everybody signing up for that. We have multiple committees that will start being enacted quickly and certainly very much respect to everybody signing up for those and volunteering their time above and beyond with all the work that's occurring across the district.
Any questions or comments regarding the committee assignments?
Yeah, one addition, I'd be happy to serve on the language committee.
And we have that plan in place where we might not meet frequently, but certainly that would be kind of an infrequent meeting. I think I put down one to two meetings a year, that might not be as often.
Yep, I see we have it, we don't have anybody there, so I'd be happy to.
You had been serving on that, so that'd be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any others? Okay, moving on to item L on the agenda, the superintendent's report.
Just a couple different items, we have the ISAB State Convention coming up, and we have all those sites and locations reserved for the registration for the convention. So again, thank you for everybody going down. I think it's certainly a testament to our board. We're one of the, I think, few school districts in the state of Iowa that annually have each of our board members that attend, so we greatly appreciate that. We do have a tour of the Johnson New High School that is set up for 1:30 on that Thursday afternoon, and I think that'll be a great opportunity to see a brand-new school that has been recently built in the state of Iowa. We're also working on how can we make sure that we all experience the new Eight-Walky Apex Building. We may try to reach out and do that more with our 3D viewfinders if we can't do it on that day because Invision Architecture, who designed that building, has created virtual reality, which is awesome to be able to really be immersive in that structure just to see what that provides for students, similar to our CAPS program. We also have November 26 board meeting, the ISAB follow-up, so we'll do that either in kind of a work session or another format to dig deeper into the learning that we gathered and garnered from that convention.
And that will be immediately before or after or?
We'll need to work with you and Joyce to determine that. I think in the past, we've done that before because we think 30 minutes typically is enough time to kind of go through that. So I'll probably send out a reminder to make sure if there's, if everybody would be available at 5 o'clock on November 26, that would be best.
Okay. Put it on your calendar now. Any other questions or comments?
Two quick things, PTA, PTO, PTU.
Yes.
I know there's been some name changes out there. I believe Dr. Patty will be sending that document out after he clarifies with the schools when everything will fit.
Yes, thank you for getting that together, and we now have kind of a master matrix of when each of those meet, so thank you for that.
Great. And then Band Booster Pancake Breakfast is on Saturday morning, 6:30 to 2, 6:30 a.m. to 2 p.m. You can get your booster raffle ticket, whatever, from a student, or you can just go and pay.
I just noticed one time on here says 7 to 1 p.m. on the Mix website, they mentioned it there. I had to look it up because these are some of the best pancakes you're going to be able to get.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, they are some of the best. You know, you can go with, you can go with 7, I think on the Mississippi Valley schedule, it says 6:30. Maybe you are that early, you could just go and probably help, Jeff.
I was planning on it.
So if you show up at 6:30, just look for Kyle.
Or maybe it's 6:30 to 7, that's when that bad pancake happens, it's always that first pancake.
There's this first one, right? Too thick, whatever. It is at the high school in the cafeteria, which is an excellent opportunity to view the cafeteria and those facilities.
Yes. Any other question, thank you, Suzie, any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Haseman, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Giddens, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you.